11, said her list was posted at the entrance of the board of education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun, Star Ledger, New York, Jersey, Herald News, and the Nutley Journal. Mailed to the Nutley Township clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun on May 19th, 2011. Posted on the district website, this is an official meeting. Please stand for a moment silent and next. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to your brother and sister friends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Call the hall please.
Mrs. Jane Chenmore?
Here.
Mrs. Flynn?
Here.
Mrs. Zinski?
Here.
Dr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Mrs. Russo?
Here.
Mrs. Scolera?
Here.
Mrs. Fazada?
Here.
Mr. Cookton?
Here.
Welcome everybody back for the holidays. Happy New Year to all. Start meeting. Superintendent News Report.
Thank you, Mr. Cookton. I will be short there. We have a presentation coming. First, I want to wish everybody Happy New Year. It's the first time I've seen you, so welcome back. I hope this year is even better than with the most great countries. I am delighted to announce that Mr. Andrew Dean, whom we hired at the last board meeting, we were able to procure his services earlier than expected. He began on the third, so he can with us and will be with us for the full time. So welcome, Andrew. Also, delighted to announce that earlier, the forensics team here from Nutley plays second, a team of over twenty, a pool of over twenty, a most recent competition. We also had outstanding performances from Nicolette Villia and Amy Simenisi. I'm sorry. Simenisi, geez, my name's it. Simenisi. Simenisi, sorry. That placed as individuals during the competition. So, sorry for the names, but congratulations to them and to your team. And to Mr. DiPaolo, to lead my group. Today, we had, I think, hopefully, what will prove to be an extremely successful articulation day. We had all staff members involved, faculty and staff. It was really another big push for the common vision, common line that we discussed in the past. We're trying to build consistent system that puts data, or the right data into teacher's hands at the right time. Been helping everyone, including the board, to still take decisions about resources, instruction, placement, as well perform conversations between everyone about students and student requirements. One thought for the board, we talked earlier about the aspiring administrators academy, generated by ideas from actually our faculty who are interested in the further profession of government. It's twice a month, we'll be meeting with a group of cohort, other teachers who are interested in pursuing studying actually what it means to be an administrator. Our first meeting will be this Thursday, so we'll let you know how that transpires. Our strategic planning, initial leadership survey closes tomorrow, so if anyone hasn't completed that, you can jump online. You can hit the link again if you have to send it before break. Send it all over again. As far as just reporting out to the public, as of tomorrow, we'll be opening up our public surveys. We are looking for as many responses as we possibly can get. There will be three different surveys going out. Through an ambiance and our community information system will be contacting parents directly. At the elementary level, be prepared to receive informational backup and paper. Before that, there'll be a link that you can go to as a parent, take the parent-specific survey. We're also hopefully leveraging ambiance to contact students in middle school and the high school. They'll have a separate student survey. And then there on the website, where you can already find most of this information, there'll be a link to community member. Going in through asking is that you provide an address. We're not looking to confirm whose answers are what. It's an anonymous survey, but knowing who's been to the survey, you have to provide the address, so we don't see who's. Other than that, that goes out tomorrow. It will close next Wednesday. Our next meeting for strategic planning is closer to 26. Finally, just kind of in preparation for the presentation about to speak, I definitely want to thank all of the high school administrators, certainly the coordinators, and Ms. DeVillio and Ms. Filani, which are very happy that they've come. So, they put a ton of work into this. I think it's another step forward, just to kind of constantly reminding, redefining the rigor that we hold for ourselves and for our students. So, thank you to all of them for all of their work.
Superintendent Turner?
We continue to work on the development of the 2012-2013 budget, and we'll be rolling it out through the finance committee here shortly, because we have several meetings each week to discuss the elements of the budget and how it is progressing. And the superintendent and I, just for the board's information, we are in the process of doing the initial evaluations for the respondents to the legal RFQ. The results for the solar RFQ are due tomorrow, and the RFQ for the student information system is due on Friday. Thank you.
Superintendent Lazzaro, introduce the presentation.
I'm very happy to turn it over to Ms. Filani, and Mrs. Administrators, Mr. Kandary, and everyone moving along with you down to Ms. Ravania. It's been a hard fought, I think, couple of months, few months, yes, that is. This is our first lift. We need a POS, we now I can say have the POS and moving forward. Not only we're form conversation, but I think the work will become much more collaborative and it's a little bit easier that we have a first draft kind of in front of everyone. It did go before the academic committee and numerous drafts. We had a few questions about it, and again, just thanks to them for all the work and the effort.
Good evening. Ms. DeVillio and I are going to start by discussing some of the components of the program study, and then we're going to turn it over to the coordinators, who will then continue the discussion. We've been working diligently for the past two months to get a program of studies together for this time of year, so that Ms. DeVillio can begin to schedule the students for next year. So, we hope this will outline clearly for them what the expectations are and answer any questions they may have. The purpose of the program of studies is to help the students navigate through the many facets of high school. It helps outline graduation requirements, what's expected of them, and will hopefully be used by them and their parents as a tool to help making their scheduling decisions as they look to plan not only the current, the year that they're going into, but their entire four years of high school. The graduation requirements, there are two ways currently for our students to complete graduation requirements. One is the traditional 120 credit program, where students can take all of the courses that they need, the credits that are required for graduation by attending classes. This is currently the way almost all of our students are taking their programs. The second is option two. Option two is a way for students to obtain graduation requirements through traditional coursework in high school as well as coursework in other programs. Option two provides that we have in place a procedure for them to not only apply for the course and the credits through our district, take the courses, but then make sure they learned what they needed to learn to get proper credit for that class. So, what will happen, and we'll need to work on a district policy for this moving forward, but there'll be a preapproval process where the student will have to complete an application and also provide the information from the location, the school or other location where they wish to take the courses. From there, that information will go to the high school coordinator in the department where the course would fall. Once the coordinator begins to review that coursework and we see that it actually fits what our requirements are, the student will then be permitted to take that class or course elsewhere. Upon successful completion of that course, the student would then have to come back and take our final exam for the course to make sure that they did actually learn what they needed to learn to get our credit. They do get credit in our high school, but their grade would not count toward their GPA.
In looking at the POS and trying to develop a program of studies that really meets the needs of all our students, we looked at our current AP policy and we tweaked it slightly compared to what we did last year for this current school year. Currently, in this school year, 2011-12, students went through the AP process last year, where they filled out a form, met with the teacher that's teaching the class, to make sure that they understood what the class was like and they were properly prepared for the course. On the form, the parent of the student understood that in taking the AP class this year, they were going to sit for the AP exam. If they didn't, if they don't sit for the AP exam this year, the course weighting is going to be changed from AP weight to honors weight for this year in the GPA calculations. But with all the changes that we're looking at doing in the POS, we had to tweak the AP program slightly. We are still using the AP recommendation form. We made a universal form, so students don't need a specific form for a specific department. It's one form, it's very comprehensive. The other change is, we'll see in a few moments, when we looked at our grading scale, we have now married up AP and honors weight, and I'll explain that in a few moments, but the AP courses are now weighted the same as honors courses, and in doing so, we had to change the expectations of the AP exam. Students are and will be strongly encouraged to take the AP exam next year and moving forward. The difference this year is, the AP exam is the only way for a student to have a final exam exemption in Nutley. Starting next year, moving forward, a student who sits for the AP exam in May will be exempt from the Nutley High School final exam for that course. If they do not sit for the AP exam, they will be required to take the Nutley High School final exam, which will be a challenging exam and very much in line with the AP exam itself. And the difference being is if you take the Nutley High School final exam, it counts as one-ninth of your final average, as opposed to the AP exam, which will help you in the future at the college level for possibly earning college credits. Scheduling parameters. For many years, within Nutley High School, when students look to change a course, change a level, move up to honors, downgrade from honors to regular, we do not have any scheduling parameters currently within the high school. We have no deadlines, we have no strict procedures, and it's a little disorganized. So, in writing the POS, we came up with a universal form that allows students to possibly change a recommended course level, change a level once the year has started within a timeframe, withdraw from a course or audit a course. So, using this form, everything is equal and fair, and it's done in a timely manner. When it comes to course levels, students are recommended currently around this time of year for courses that they will take in the following school year. Those recommendations are based on the student's performance, their ability, their proficiency level, and their current classes, and the prerequisites that they've already met, which allow them to take a course in the following school year. If a student wishes to override that agreement, we will have one universal form, and on this form, there will be one section where this is addressed. The only exception would be in mathematics, because we have found with our experience this year, is that when students are recommended for a math course and override it, this year we have found that many of those overrides are being overridden back to the original placement, because it was a very accurate placement of where they should have been placed in math. So, we want to be extra cautious when it comes, extra cautious when it comes to mathematics, and there will be an assessment to see if they can override that recommendation, because we want to make sure if they are going to a higher level, they actually have the skills and the math concepts down before they go to a higher level. Level changes refers to a student that may have started the year in honors or in AP, and within the first marking period realizes maybe it's a little bit of a struggle. This change will be done using the same form in conjunction with the parent, the student, the guidance counselor, and the department coordinator, and again, signed off in a certain timeframe. It will be one marking period, to give the student a full marking period, to really understand what the class that they're in is like, and whether that's an appropriate placement. For students that are transferring, we understand that they're always going to come in in September, so they have 30 days from their start date. Course changes is more like a true drop ad. Think back to those colleges, where you're coming in, you think you want macroeconomics, realize two days into this course, this is not going to work for me. It all depends on an open seat, the flexibility of moving to a course that is open, and again, this is done in conjunction with the parent, the student, department coordinator, and the guidance counselor. Here, we are doing, September 30th is the deadline for course changes, for a drop ad, and again, 30 days for a transfer student. Withdrawals, we in the past have often had students withdraw from the class in Nutley High School for one reason or another, and oftentimes, it's done very late. A student may not want the class anymore, they're struggling, and they're giving up. And in every school that we researched, whether it was an Essex County school, it was another school in New Jersey, in Bergen County, I called quite a few local high schools, everybody else has withdrawal deadlines. And they also have consequences for withdrawing from a class. Currently, a student withdraws from a course in Nutley High School, it goes away. There is no record on their transcript. So, what we have established is withdrawal dates. A student that withdraws from a course within the first 30 days, if I'm remembering correctly, a lot of dates in my head, that course will not appear on their transcript. If a student withdraws from a course anytime after 30 days, the current teacher is involved in the process, as well as the parent, the student, guidance counselor, and coordinator, and a designation on the transcript of WP or WF, withdrawal failing or withdrawal passing, will be on the transcript, so the colleges know that they withdrew, that they have withdrawn, and at that time, they were passing the class, or at that time, they were failing the course. The absolute deadline date for any withdrawal with the WP or WF is February 1st. And finally, we have audits. Audits are not done on a regular basis. If and when they do happen, again, the same form is used in conjunction with all of the same people, and the audit agreement has to be made between the student and the teacher of the class that they're currently enrolled in. The seat has to be available, and when a student and a teacher agree to an audit agreement, they must follow all the rules, procedures, syllabus, course assignments in that course. There is no responsibility to grade the coursework. If a student is not following the rules, procedures, and syllabus, then that audit agreement is broken, and they will be removed from the class. We don't want a student in a course auditing, taking away from the learning of the students that are enrolled for credit and are going to be earning a grade.
Within scheduling parameters and also the other areas of the POS, we're talking here about full-year courses, but there are procedures set up for half-year and semester courses also, which are outlined in the document.
Grading parameters. We did a great deal of research when it came to our current grading system. I called nearly 15 colleges and universities, state schools, private schools, small schools, large schools, area high schools, and did extensive research. And we really took a lot of time as coordinators to look at our current grading scale. And a lot of the feedback that we received from the colleges was that Nutley's grade scale is greatly inflated. Our GPA scale is somewhat off the charts, so to speak, and we decided to look at it and use best practices and decide what was in the best interest for the student, what would be fair, what would be equitable, and what would be, what would most represent what we're trying to do in Nutley High School. If you look at our current grade scale, the range for earning an A is nine points, the range for earning either a B or a C is eight points, the range for earning a D is seven points. So, it's not a fair and even distributed scale. We looked at making that a little bit more normalized. We also looked at weighting, and we also looked at, as I said, the honors and AP weight. Want to put that up? And speaking with the colleges, many of them, when I asked about what effects would this have on our student in the admissions process, how would it be looked, what are your opinions, how do you see us? And a state school, among others, told me that in most cases, schools will recalculate GPA on the standard, an A is a four, a B is a three, a C is a two, a D is a one. So, when we did our grade scale, you can see in the standard scale, we use that as our norms. The A is a 4.0, a B is a 3.0, a C is a 2.0, a D is a 1.0, and the pluses and minuses are distributed equally between the whole number, so to speak. The college that I spoke to specifically said that when they recalculate, they don't always recalculate every school, but they have kind of an unspoken written list of schools that they always recalculate for, and Nutley is one of them, because they find our GPA scale to be quite inflated and not a true indication of what the GPA should be, because currently you can earn a 5.6 in an AP course. And what does a 5.6 mean when an A is a four? So, that was, that really hit home, and to hear that from a well-respected state school, it really made us reflect on what are we doing and what are we trying to do for our And as I said with the AP, the reason for our AP policy change was because of the AP weight. An honors course can be equal to or even more challenging than an AP course. Mr. O'Dell will back me up on this. We had a course in Nutley High School, con law. That was a very challenging course, which our AP gov course is somewhat modeled after, but in order to get to that AP curriculum that is required by AP, we had to scale down that honors course to meet the requirements of the AP course, because the AP curriculum is dictated by AP audit. Whereas in honors course, we can make our curriculum our curriculum. So, honors courses in many cases can be as challenging or more challenging than an AP course. So, we felt this would allow students to reflect the courses that they want to take, because perhaps there's an honors course in our curriculum that they really want to take, but they've been discouraged from taking it, because they felt like, well, if I take an honors class, it's going to hurt me, because I really want that AP course for that weight. So, we wanted to give the students a chance to take challenging courses in the areas they truly wanted to study. When it comes to the weighting between the standard course and the AP honors course, instead of increasing by a full point or half a point, we chose to go, again, looking at the area schools, with a half a point increase from the honors, from standard to the honors. And then the last point on that prior scale, is the ranking. We, again, lots of research, we, when I get reports from colleges, when I get their profiles of their enrolled freshman court classes, they, more than half of the schools say that their incoming freshman class comes from schools that do not rank. Ranking in some cases can hurt a student. Currently, we use a decile rank, and the difficulty with our current system where we rank students by decile is, if you have very, very competitive class, someone in the second decile, the top 20%, could be a student with all AP courses, but that class is so competitive that we're going to use a statistic that doesn't represent the strength of their schedule, the courses they've taken, and the grades they've achieved in that. By not reporting rank, the student is evaluated on their transcript and the strength of their schedule. One year, a student in the second decile may be much stronger than the following year, the prior year where the student was in the first decile. You cannot prepare one year to the next and one class to the next. So, we have noticed as guidance counselors that often, reporting a decile rank of second decile or two, will hurt students' chances of getting into a college, because they're a strong student, and that second decile, that indication hurts them in the wrong room. We don't want to hold our students back, we want to make sure they have the opportunity to be evaluated in the best light.
For National Honor Society, going off of the chart that, the grading scale that we just had up, a student with a weighted GPA of 3.7 would be eligible for National Honor Society. Do you want to explain what your version of it?
When a student, again, one of the things that we talked about, and that many colleges ask for, that we don't currently do in Nutley, is we only report weighted GPA, but we are going to move towards calculating both weighted and unweighted. When a school asks for unweighted GPA, we actually have to do hand calculations, which is somewhat archaic. So, in calculating weighted and unweighted, a student that has AP and honors classes has the standard weight for all those classes and the grades they achieve in those courses. So, an unweighted GPA, which we designate as GPA, will be calculated for all students, as well as a weighted GPA. If a student does not have any honors or AP courses, their weighted GPA and unweighted GPA will be the same. For a student that does have a mix of courses, their unweighted, their GPA will obviously be lower, because you're calculating without the weights, and their W GPA, their weighted GPA, will be higher, because in those calculations, you have .5 added to that GPA scale. So, by using the weighted GPA average, both students, those that have AP and honors and those that do not, have that same range in order to be eligible for the National Honor Society. An unweighted GPA is an A minus. So, you can be in all regular classes, college prep courses, no honors, no AP. If you're working hard and doing your best and earning As, well, that makes you eligible for the National Honor Society, because that is a high-performing student, a student that is meeting the requirements. And as for students that have a weighted GPA with the honors and AP courses computed in there, it's, their GPA is going to meet that, if not exceed that.
Moving into 2012-2013 school year, the requirements for National Honor Society eligibility changed slightly. This year, and this was the only year, the service, school service activities for juniors were, was at three, and the community service hours were cut to 12. Prior to this current school year, they were where they are for going into next year. So, for juniors to be eligible for the National Honor Society, they would need to complete at least six school service activities by the middle of their junior year. A school service activity could be anything from band or choir, where they're performing for outside groups, athletics, cheerleaders, some clubs.
Student constructive decisions, GSA, student council.
So, a student being involved in just two activities a year would make them eligible for National Honor Society. And then for seniors, if they don't make National Honor Society by their junior year, for seniors it would be eight, expecting that they'd still continue that school service activity. For community service, it's expected that juniors will have at least 24 hours of community service by March of their junior year, and for seniors, it would be 32 hours if they were entering during their senior year.
Basically, it comes out to eight hours per year, which is two Saturdays, perhaps?
Two half-days for a school year. So, and again, this is the minimum. And students are inducted into the organization each spring, whether you're inducted in as a junior or a senior, that induction occurs in the spring. For athletic and extracurricular activities, currently, students need to meet minimum credit requirements to be eligible to play sports for each season, and that will stay in place, and then we're just extending that to extracurricular activities. So, students who are either athletes or participating in other activities need to meet the minimum credit requirements each year to be eligible to participate in those activities. Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Williams and Mr. Francia. They're going to talk about cut procedures. As we were going through this process, we also, as we were doing our research in many different high schools throughout the area, we were looking at what they do in terms of cuts. So, we have an outlined set of cut procedures. This is, again, we're just talking about a full-year course here. There are specific procedures similar to this for half-year and semester courses, which are specifically outlined in the program of study, but again, we're only talking about full-year here.
Good evening. My name is Frank Francia. I'm the vice principal of the high school. It is agreed, I think, that if students are not attending class, they can't meet their academic obligations. So, we've come up with procedures for students who are absent without permission, which is also referred to as cutting, and on the first occurrence, if a student elects to take upon themselves to miss class, a written parental notification will be sent home to the parents, notifying them of what's occurring. All work for that day will result in a zero. Most importantly, I think, the intervention, we're going to have guidance get involved now and speak with the students, so they can intervene and get involved to help them out, as well as a three-day central detention. We changed this a little bit from our current procedures. We have added an extra occurrence, that's why. So, on the second occurrence, they will receive a one day of in-school suspension. What we did add here is a loss of privilege for extracurricular activities for up to two weeks. That was not what we were currently doing. We think that that's important, to throw that in there. A parental phone conference will be also included during the second occurrence. Again, guidance intervention. All work will result in a zero as well. That continues, all work will result in a zero throughout every occurrence, along with the guidance intervention. For a third occurrence, we upped the consequence to two in-school suspensions, loss of extracurricular activities for up to four weeks for that student. Extracurricular will include any athletics or clubs that students are involved in. Student will be denied credit for the course on the fourth one, so what we want to do is bring the parents in on the third occurrence and notify them in person and explain to them, so we get the parents involved. Hopefully, they can assist in helping us, because we don't want to actually withdraw students. That's not the goal. The goal is to try to help get the parents involved, so we can discuss that, and guidance intervention as well. On the fourth occurrence, unfortunately, students will be withdrawn from the course, and they will receive no credit for that course. Additionally, we will also remove them from any extracurricular activities for the remainder of the school year, along with three days of in-school suspension. And we will bring in the parents. And we will bring in the parents again as well to discuss what's going on so they're fully aware through each occurrence what's occurring. There's no discrepancies there. This is for a full-year course. For a half-year course, such as a financial literacy or a computer applications course, the steps are accelerated a little bit, the occurrences. We only offer three occurrences at that point. Very similar to the first three, except on the second occurrence, the loss of privilege for your extracurricular activities will be up to the two weeks. And then it's a full year on your third occurrence. With two in-school suspensions on your third occurrence. On the marking period courses, such as health, we accelerate even further. There's only two occurrences. On the first occurrence, it's very important at that point to bring the parents in and we have that one-on-one meeting with them to explain to them what's happening, that they only have one chance in a marking period course. But if a second occurrence does occur, we do give them two days of in-school suspension, loss of extracurricular activities, and we will also remove them and withdraw them from the course.
To piggyback on Mr. Francia, basically, we want to make sure all stakeholder groups, the parents, the students, the staff, in terms of the guidance counselors, are in on the process here. Again, the idea is not to take away credit, but to realize that instructional time is important. Thank you. Oh, Onko, okay. Dennis Williams, Nutley High School Vice Principal. Thank you for your time and your ears. This process in general, as I can speak to everybody involved here, has been tough. And it's always tough when you're doing self-critical analysis and self-reflection. In any public setting, you have to do this. And I would just, I'm thankful for this opportunity and the fact that we're building infrastructure and procedures to review this stuff. So this stuff gets done every year and there's a transparency for all stakeholders involved in the community. To this point, small conversations going on throughout the year. Last year, with National Honor Society sponsors, Mr. Cagle, Mrs. Camarda, Coach Steve De Gregorio, and Sue Bresnan, our library media specialist, who has written a curriculum for library media stuff that includes plagiarism that's being taught at the Rutgers Graduate School. All three people, all three groups came up with the idea via conversation that we should kind of firm up, since we now have the opportunity. We're reflecting, what are we doing here? Let's talk about plagiarism and academic integrity. So the honor code that we're going to be implementing through this POS is something that, again, we're looking at best practice across the board. We've looked at a number of schools. Steve De Gregorio, as many of you know, lives in Princeton, and his experience with Princeton High School kind of drove this. And when we all discussed this and we thought about it, we thought it was a good thing because, obviously, in this day and age, everybody's looking to get an edge, right? If you look at the sports field, if it's, you know, steroids and growth hormones, if it's just culture outside that's kind of reflecting on students, that it's okay to get that unnatural advantage. We want it to be, in the academic community that is Nutley High School, your best effort. That's the best way to grow and learn, is to try your best. So the idea here is, and I'm just going to read off what the honor code is, Nutley High School believes that striving for academic excellence is dependent upon each student's commitment to academic integrity. The pursuit of knowledge is the mission of the school and responsibility of each individual student. The faculty endeavors to guide the academic growth, while parents and greater community provide support. To maintain this focus on learning and tradition of academic excellence in Nutley High School, the students, parents, faculty, community must stand in unison, demonstrating high regard for learning and personal academic integrity required for intellectual growth. This culture of learning can only flourish upon solid foundation of personal academic integrity made up of honesty, trust, fairness, respect, and responsibility. So that will be a pledge. Each student will find this in their handbook. It will be mailed out at the beginning of the year. Parents will sign off, hopefully, with having a fruitful discussion with their students that they pledge that the work they submit, whatever it is, a test, a project, what have you, that the work that they submit is their own and they have neither given or received any unauthorized aid or unfair advantage, and they sign off on that. So, again, trying to maintain integrity and getting a purpose to what we do. Thank you.
That honor code form will also be found at the back of the program of study. Next, I'd like to introduce the coordinators. They're each going to have the opportunity to speak to you about their individual departments and programs. So first, I'd like to introduce Mr. George Ackerman.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, my name is George Ackerman and I'm the coordinator of the Business and Creative Arts Department. My department is divided into three totally unique sections. Business Education, Career and Technical Education, and Visual Arts. Business Education includes classes relating to those skills required in today's business world, such as college prep accounting and business law. And also includes classes that teach the everyday life skills required by all students as they enter the 21st century world, such as computer applications and financial literacy. College credit can be earned through successful completion of some of our classes. Career and Technical Education includes technology-based classes, such as traditional woodworking and metalworking, and includes, and state-of-the-art classes, such as architectural design and TV production. Our Culinary Art Sequence is one of the most popular offerings in the school. Non-college-bound students are eligible to enter one of our school-to-career programs, which offers real-world experiences and on-the-job training under the watchful eye of skilled professionals. They also can receive college credit for successful completion of certain classes. Visual Arts provides all students the opportunity to stimulate and develop their creativity while exposing them to cultural diversity and leads them to a better understanding of the role of art in their everyday lives. Offerings include introductory classes, such as Art Fundamentals and Art One. For those students leaning towards a career in visual arts-related fields, we offer an in-depth sequence culminating with a choice of AP Studio Drawing, 2D or 3D. Digital Photography and Design also falls under this heading. The entire Business and Creative Arts Department took part, took an active part in creating our part of the program of study. We found ourselves looking at existing offerings in depth, eliminating offerings that were no longer relevant, and aligning our courses with state-recognized guidelines. These sessions helped foster discussion for new courses and additional advanced-level offerings. This has turned out to be a positive experience for all involved that has now opened up new and exciting dialogue within my department. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Michael Kandari.
I'm Michael Kandari, coordinator of Music Department. Thanks for having us here tonight. This has been, this has really been a great process because I think as a new coordinator, it's been great that we've spent so much time learning about each other's departments and the needs. And I think we have a better understanding going forward, not just for the students, but what we're doing with each other and offering across the board. We're really proud of the unique musical opportunities that we're able to offer here in Nutley and appreciate the support that we get, you know, in these fiscal, these budgetary problems, times that we're having. It's difficult to always support the arts and we appreciate that support we get. Because I think, you know, a strong arts program coupled with vigorous academics and strong athletics and a school that provides all these community service opportunities really will be a beacon in this area when we don't see that, you know, rising in many schools. You know, so I think we're at a great opportunity here. We've been working to expand offerings in the Music Department to help students that want to go on in college, as well as students that are looking to satisfy the fine and performing arts requirement. So, we do have our Academy, which helps our students that are worried about portfolios and auditions and all the vigors of getting into college as a music major. And next year, we're offering a new course, our Explorations, which will be an introductory class for any high school student that looks, looking to satisfy their performing arts requirement. And it'll be an introduction to some piano skills, some technology-based music projects, and music history. So we look forward to that next year. Working with the POS, we were asking you to do one positive thing that came of this for us. And I think, one of the issues that we had in the Music Department was, what Jill was talking about, was the inflated GPA. Because we have, I think, some of the best students in the school in our program yet. When I, several years ago, before we instituted an honors program that we had students, it was hurting their GPA to take music. So we would have them, you know, leaving music classes or leaving the class, a lot of different courses, not just music, things that meant a lot to them to satisfy this race for this, the high GPA. And I think by leveling off the playing field, we were able to look at what we were offering in our honors program. And instead of having an honors program that was maybe more based on extra credits, not on vigorous academic music study, we're able to, now that the playing field is leveled, offer two new courses that will be honors, which is our Chamber Singers, which will be a more vigorous choral course, and our Wind Ensemble as a course. So I think it's a very positive outturn of this POS. I think what it does is it erases the race to this GPA finish line that students were all thinking about, and we heard about it constantly. And I think now that that's gone, students are going to take the courses that are, that are, that they really want to, that will serve them best. And they'll learn that it's, you know, it's a lifelong race learning, not just racing to that hope, that hopes of a high GPA at the end of their senior year. So, thanks for that.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kent Banyan for the Science Department.
My name is Kent Banyan, the Science Coordinator for the district. I just want to tell you a little about our department, about what we offer to high school, and about how the POS has helped us get to our common goals. Our department is 11 faculty members. We teach four different areas of science, earth science, physical science, chemistry, and life science. We offer a variety of courses that include four AP courses, several courses that get Project Acceleration credit, courses that get UMD and J credit, and a variety of courses that run the gamut of science education. For graduation requirements, we have three components, A, B, and C. A is biology, B is chemistry, environmental science, or physics, and the third, inquiry-based, science, lab science. I think this has come and brought us all together, as Mike said. It really gives a really strong correlation between special ed courses and regular ed courses in the Science Department. Our special ed courses mimic our regular ed courses. It provides the same basic education in a self-contained or small group setting. Also, it gives everyone a clear understanding of graduation requirements, which is often confusing, and gives a place for everyone, faculty, staff, students, to look and see, you know, what we offer, what we require, and what it takes to graduate. And also gives them some information about how they earn college credits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Odell.
Good evening. In many ways, this was a process of reaffirmation. The mission of the Social Studies Department is clear. It's to create and educate citizens for a vibrant democracy and by extension of our power, the broader global community. Now, since this, you know, mission is about as old as the American experiment in public education, it really wasn't surprising that much of what we did reinforced our understanding of this mission and our appreciation of how important it was. What was new, however, was it started the dialogue on assessment. Now, how do we know our students really are able to perform as active citizens, as informed citizens? So we looked at ways that perhaps we can get them more engaged in the community. Some performance assessments, where they have to, you know, reenact certain roles in the political process. And most importantly, trying to leverage all the new technology that's emerging. Now, this is an age where most people will get their political information from the internet, from blogs. One of the things that's emerged out of Iowa, New Hampshire, apparently, the tweet is the new political handshake. So, you know, the ability of students to, you know, understand these technologies and utilize them, you know, has to become part of our assessment process and how also we provide our instruction. And we still maintain a very strong program. We meet the state requirements, we have world history, which will take their freshman year, two years of American history. We also maintain our advanced placement courses in macroeconomics, geography, government, politics, human geography, and AP American history, as well as electives in sociology, and European history, archaeology, courses like that. So, you know, we find the process to be very encouraging and stimulating and we look forward to continuing in this regard. Thank you.
Health and Phys Ed? Mr. Francia, Mr. Williams?
Giving voice to the Phys Ed and Health Department, Mr. Francia and I have been acting department chair people. To give you an overview, and this was an eye-opener for me. The NHS Physical Education Health Department is committed to providing a high-quality program that is both developmentally and instructionally relevant for all students. In Phys Ed, the goal is to provide students with a variety of activities that will prepare them for a lifetime of fitness and well-being, right, with instructional practice recognizing changing developmental and movement abilities. And the idea is to develop self-confidence through teamwork and leadership skills. In Health, the idea is to deliver instruction that will have a strong impact on promoting healthy young adults. Instructional practice is focusing on developing critical thinking skills to enable students to make informed decisions to encourage healthy lifestyles. I just quickly want to talk about the Sequence of Health given out, and Mr. Francia will talk about the Phys Ed. Grade Nine Health is designed to introduce the freshman student to relevant adolescent health and wellness issues, proper diet and nutrition. The idea of smoking is bad, right, mental health issues, including teen suicide is also part of the curriculum. Grade 10, the Health, instruction is focused on the driving experience. A lovely driving experience in New Jersey, which I'm going through right now with my daughter, very scary. At the end of that sequence, they take the New Jersey State Driver's Exam. So that's always, we're happy that we're still providing that lesson of life for the roads. Grade 11, the Health Sequence is for family life education. And according to state mandates, topics such as the reproductive system, relationship, pregnancy, birth, parenting, contraception, abstinence, all of the fun stuff is discussed in a relevant, critical environment so teens can make informed decisions. Grade 12, the Health Curriculum is designed to reinforce everything they've learned wellness-wise throughout their three, four years in Nutley High School, and then also expose it to basic first aid procedures, personal safety topics, and an optional CPR certification program. So it's a very diverse, enriching, critically important aspect of Health it is for our students. Thank you.
Not to overlap too much of what Mr. Williams said about physical education, but they meet three marking periods out of the four marking periods in the year. The Physical Education Department meets the state requirements through a well-balanced program, physical activities and wellness activities. They're assessed through various techniques. One of the major assessments is the Presidential Physical Fitness Challenge. That's for each of the years that they are in physical education. They're to develop skills through various teamwork and individual activities. Some of the activities are through jogging programs. They teach them about the different programs. They create portfolios on strength training, better understanding on strength training, and how to monitor their heart rates. So, the physical education is not just about attending class and just playing basketball, but teaching them about lifelong skills and physical activity. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. I'm Cindy DeBones, head of the English Department at Nutley High School. And basically, our course of study is designed to fulfill the aims of Nutley High School in providing experiences and training which may be differentiated to apply to a wide range of student abilities and purposes. Broadly considered, the following areas are our focus. And I would just like to mention that in the past three years, we've really done a great job in the English Department of bridging the gap between special education and regular education. And that's to the very good efforts, I would say, of all of the staff, our regular English teachers, as well as our special ed teachers that are assigned to our department. And our focus is to develop continuing skills in communication of ideas through experiences in reading, writing, listening, and speaking so that students will be prepared for the demands of schoolwork, college, business, or life itself. We'd like to provide experiences which will help the student to take his or her active place in a democratic society, encouraging each student to think logically and express himself or herself clearly. To stimulate the student's curiosity, creativity, and imagination by using the experiences of literature so that the student may see his or her own existence in the perspective of other times and other cultures. Some of the requirements include practice in reading, writing, listening, and speaking, reading of a variety of literary forms, special attention to the conventions of standard English grammar, vocabulary, usage, and spelling, and training in research techniques and technology. The Program of Study update has been a positive experience for us because it promoted a reflection of the components of each course offered and a review of what is beneficial for student growth and learning in the 21st century.
Four languages, Mr. Viallo.
I would like to thank, to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Viallo, first of all, for her leadership and guidance throughout this process. I also have to thank the teachers who worked very diligently, collaboratively, towards this endeavor. The Word Languages Department offers the four languages, Italian, French, Latin, and Spanish Levels 1 to 5 AP. Beginning with Level 2, we also offer red- Beginning with level two, we also offer honors courses. Presently, to be eligible to sign up for honors courses, we require an A or a A minus or better in the previous level. All the courses are sequential. At times, there are students who are proficient in levels one or two, perhaps because they are speaking the language at home, the students are offered to take a placement exam for those levels, and they are placed at the appropriate level of proficiency. Speaking of proficiency, all the students must achieve a certain level of proficiency by the end of each course. And they are based on the ACTFEL, which is the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards Proficiency Guidelines for Word Languages. They are known as NAMIS MIT for Level One course to advance law for AP course. In Spanish, we also offer Heritage Spanish I and II honors. These two levels are specifically designed for students whose first language at home is Spanish. The state requirements in Word Languages are five credits for one course. College-bound students, however, go on to Level Three, and many go on to Level Four and AP. The Word Languages Department also offers a national honor, language honor society in each of the languages. To be eligible, a student must be enrolled in at least a third year of the languages, have an A minus average in all the language courses taken, plus achieve a minimum overall of B plus average. As for ESL, English as a second language, we offer beginners reading and writing, intermediate and advanced. These courses are designed specifically for ELL students, which is English language learners. These are students with little or no English language knowledge. Students are placed in levels depending on their English proficiency. When students first enroll in Nutley, they are tested by the ESL teacher with a state-approved proficiency test, after which they are placed appropriately. Students are not placed by grade level, but rather by proficiency level. However, the proficiency levels differ from those of the Word Languages. There are six levels of proficiencies in ESL. There is from entering, number one, entering, two, beginning, three, developing, expanding, five, bridging, and six, reaching. Students receive credits towards graduation requirements in English or in a Word Language. To exit the program, students must show proficiency level at least of a 4.5 between expanding and bridging. The students not only are tested with the NJAS and HESPA, but they are also tested annually in the spring with a state-mandated test called the EACSAS, Assessing Communication and Comprehension in English State to State for ELL. Most of the students stay in the program three or maybe four years. If we have more, 20 or more students in a district who speak the same language, and we do, state law requires the district to offer bilingual education. Every year, however, we apply for a bilingual waiver. Since we don't have a bilingual education, therefore, we must give, offer ESL instructions to all ELL students, two periods at a time. Writing this program of study and having reached a teacher's input has made the staff aware in a positive manner of the importance of what they teach and what they do in each of the courses. Thank you.
Thank you.
I first want to clear up graduation requirements as a class of 2012, correct? Algebra I, that was the first class. Okay. Before the class of 2012, every student needed to take three math courses. But if they wanted to apply to a four-year college, they had to be three college prep math courses, which were, were Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. Starting with the class of 2012, every student has to take Algebra I and then two other classes. Starting with the class 2014, it's Algebra I and Geometry. And 2016, it's Algebra I, Geometry, and a course that builds upon both, which is most likely Algebra II. So everyone has to take those subjects now. So as a result, we have worked over the last couple, two years to eliminate basic courses that did not cover a full Algebra I curriculum, geometry, and so on. So our range of courses is now Algebra I is the bottom, that's the first course, all the way up to AP Calculus and AP Statistics. The normal course is Algebra I, then Geometry, and then Algebra II, and then a pre-calculus trig. And if they take Algebra I in the middle school, which a lot of students do, grade seven or grade eight, they are able to reach calculus by senior year, either AP or honors. If they don't, we get some students from Catholic or private schools who have not taken Algebra I when they come here in ninth grade. So we have an option where they take Algebra I as a freshman, and then they double up sophomore year, Geometry, Algebra II, then the pre-calculus, and they can also reach calculus by their senior year. All of our special ed students, self-contained and inclusion, they are all taking Algebra I and Geometry and the course that builds upon. So they are all taking those courses to meet state requirements. The only courses that do not satisfy the graduation requirements in our program at this point are what's called the Math Strategies Courses. There is one for each grade during the day, and then there's a zero period offered for kids who can't fit it in their schedule. And that's just to provide remediation and preventive remediation for the HESPA, because the HESPA is also a state requirement. And that's it.
Thank you.
Just to summarize, the purpose of our Program of Studies was to have a set consistent procedures for all students, but to also have a place for parents' students to go to get answers to some of their questions. This presentation is going to be available online, the presentation and the Program of Studies tomorrow. I strongly encourage you to take a look at it, go online when you have a chance, it's 151 pages, but go through it and take a look. The first 20 pages or so are all the procedures, and what we outlined here tonight are mostly just the changes to moving forward, but it outlines more than what we've talked about tonight. The next section is course descriptions, and it's probably a good 120 pages of all the courses that we offer in the high school. So it lists all the descriptions, it outlines what the requirements are, what's expected of the student, what would be successful completion for them, and the credits that they get and where those credits fall. So please take a look at that.
And I would say, if there are any parents in the audience, for those of you that have students entering the high school next year, current freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, you really should take the time to look at the POS to help understand what courses you're taking now and how they affect the courses you take next year. Look at the prerequisites, look at the expectations of the course, but also look at the scheduling parameters in those first 20 pages, because that's going to be a big adjustment from how we've done things in the past to how we're going to do things moving on in the future. And those deadlines and scheduling parameters may cause you to think more carefully when you choose your courses for next year.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
The Program of Studies for the math courses, it really allowed me to work with my teachers to let, to inform parents and students of the differences between, say, Algebra I, Advanced Algebra I, and honors, or Geometry, Advanced Geometry, and honors. So I hope that that's what it gets across, too, in the course descriptions.
And then the last section of the Program of Studies is a section of forms, and right now, there's currently only three forms in it, but they are the three that we talked about today. The AP form, that when you go on, you'll see it's a two form and will be double-sided when it's printed, but it lists every AP course, and then the students can circle their options. There's the Honor Code Pledge Form on there, and the Course Change Form. So those three are available in the Program of Studies. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank all the high school administrators, all the coordinators, Mr. Barry, Mr. Francie, and Mr. Williams. This was truly, it was a huge undertaking in a very short period of time, just a couple months, we were able to accomplish something, I'm going to say fantastic, because from where we started to where we are is really great. And I'd just like to add that we couldn't have done it without the support and help of the teachers. That, you know, we were meeting as a group, but the coordinators were going back to their teachers and working with them on a constant, continuous basis, not only during department ratings, but on a regular basis, asking questions, getting their feedback, getting help with course descriptions, talking about the grading scale. And it was truly a building-wide collaborative effort that we could not have done without everyone's support. So I just want to thank all of you for your help over the past couple of months.
Thank you.
And then one last thing, questions or comments. Once this is online tomorrow, please take a look at it. If you have any questions, comments, suggestions, anything that you either might need clarification on, or any points you want to make, please email programofstudies@nutleyhighschool.org, and we'll give all of it to you. Thank you.
For the board members, this size of the public presentation, looking for feedback from the public, we need to still talk, and then feedback from the administrators, but it'll be on the 23rd for a final approval. I know Mitch is really anxious because knowing this, everyone, and scheduling. And you again, my thanks, certainly the teachers, it was a big process, the coordinators, again, Ms. Barry, Ms. DeBones, Ms. Martin, Mr. Valente, Peter Draxman, Mr. Banyan back there, Mr. Odell, and certainly Mr. Barry, Mr. Francie, and Mr. Williams. Again, I think they've pretty much been living together, Ms. Stavilio and Ms. Alani. Thank you very much for your hard work. Definitely, one of the things I do want to share in their conversation with me, it's extremely beneficial, I think, for everyone, teachers, coordinators, administrators, myself, all the research that went into this, a lot of it through Ms. Stavilio and the coordinators, reaching out to see, again, we're here to make sure that our students are absolutely the best-prepared students coming out of a public high school. In order to do that, we have to stop and muscle on the ground and see what else to do. And so, in some cases, it's an eye-opener, and in some cases, to use the word that we just asked on the record, it's reaffirming. But our goal always, when we put something on down the paper, is to make sure that we're at, providing absolute best for our students, and we're holding the highest expectations for ourselves, professionals, I think, they did a wonderful job, so again, thank you everybody. And the last piece is now we're done with this, we're starting the middle school programs.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Alani and the whole crew for excellent, one, an excellent presentation, informative of what they're up to, but more importantly, for the development of the Program of Studies, which is going through and hearing us, and having seen it, we had it online, really, it's a tremendous effort and a very important effort to move this forward as an education.
Yes, Mr. President, I just, again, the same way, I certainly want to thank the teachers, the coordinators, the people who work so hard. It's long, long overdue, and I know as some board members, we've talked about this privately or behind closed doors, some of us got back involved in the educational system when I was on the board many years ago. We dealt with this the way it should have been dealt with, and in my mind, there was a little bit of vacation for a while, now we're back on track. And I thank the superintendent for that, and I thank all of our board members, certainly the academic committee, who's worked extremely hard to set this goal for us, along with the superintendent, the coordinators. I'm just so happy that we're certainly going in the right direction, and we're spending our time on education like we should be. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Dr. Reeve, Chairman of the Academic Committee, which acknowledges, because we're in the committee's role.
I just want to acknowledge Superintendent Lazovic and commend him for his vision and for Ms. Alani to help carry out that vision along with our coordinators and so forth. Again, give yourselves a round of applause. And just to reiterate some of the words earlier from Superintendent Lazovic, it is a critical step to help define and raise the academic rigor of our programs at Nutley High School and our course offerings. That being said, just to reflect upon my earlier experience as academic chair, it was a piecemeal process. If we recall last year, Ms. Stavilio, you and I, we were working with the National Honor Society requirements, the AP policies, and so forth. And I know that Superintendent Lazovic reassured me that once we get into this program of study, these minor issues will correct themselves, and I feel that we have accomplished that this evening, and I just look forward, again, to moving forward this process to middle school, and hopefully grammar school will be, you know, right down the pike. So that being said, Ms. Alani, I know your hands are full, but you did a great job. Thank you so much.
Next question, the committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President. As the Chairman of the Administration Committee, my job, my, not my, is Rob Leeds building the academics, but when Rob and I ran through the board, kind of having agreed with it, he would take care of the academics and I would take care of everything else. Administratively, there's, we've also been accomplishing a lot, we're still working on updating our policies, but something that was brought to my attention, and Mr. Rogers and I talked about it today, this legislation, there's two bills that are coming up for us, if the public isn't aware of it, they certainly should be aware of it, there's two bills coming out of the legislation, S2925 and S2881. They certainly should, I would like us as a board, if you're not familiar with them, to be familiar with them. We, and I know Mr. Rogers has something to say about it, we as a board, I would hope, would be adamantly opposed to these bills, what they do to education, what they do to the Board of Education, what they do to superintendent's administration dealings with the districts. I would hope that we would be able to put something in writing opposing these legislations. And if Mr. Lazovic would like to expand on, I would appreciate that, so that we know what's been going on, and it's not good for us or education.
Interfering with Mr. Kudzinski said, my concern about these bills is that this is another situation where the state is encroaching its authority, imposing its authority, if you will, upon local school boards. You know, I know all of us are big fans of home rule, so we have a great town, a great school district. So those of you who are not familiar with the bill, you can get it online, Senate bills, and my concern is that it's truly going to be, at least in my eyes, the beginning of the end of local school boards controlling their districts. School boards need to set the policies, and the superintendents need to know that they are the CEOs of school districts, not the state government. And before I leave, I have to leave early. Mr. Kudzinski, who's in charge of the Facilities Committee, I do have from the Shared Services Reports, a report on the Radcliffe School situation regarding the rear parking lot, and I know there have been some commitments, and I appreciate the fact that we're going to look into this, so I have the reports and photographs here for both of you and the rest of the board to look at. I'm sorry, I have to go to a important engagement, so I'll catch you later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, that's all I have on the academic, I'm sorry, on the Administration Committee. One more thing that might fall underneath there, and we talked, no, actually, I guess it falls under finance, the, what we got sharing the payroll system with the town, I guess you're going to...
Well, it's coming next week. Any other?
No, as a bill? No, I would, yes, I would like to make a recommendation that, if you don't mind, that we put some type of resolution together as a Board of Education, and not being opposed to those bills.
When we gave the heads up in briefing, that's because we're getting the information ahead of time. As of right now, nothing's coming out of Lindup, so most likely happens that those will have to be sent with one each after we submit it. So until things really start to go forward, as I told you in our briefing, I want to keep you aware, no problem, it's public knowledge, we can, once we start leveraging our new website, getting this information out of a regular basis to the public. Did you want to move forward with the election bill, possibility of shipping elections?
That is by choice, right?
That is by choice, or it's a gate, and it doesn't impact the budget vote, you could argue which way, possibly, or negatively. Ask for the other two, they're up in the, as I said before, I was having conversations with a number of legislators about that, and what I can say is that they've been more open recently than in the past to listen. And they've been open in the past, but they haven't been very open recently, so I will keep you ready for that.
Thank you. Now, come, portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Board regulations, allow 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more and once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic that has been heard. All statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please begin with me. Always take your name and address each and every time you address the board, first person wishing to be heard, please step forward. the board, first person wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Terry Clark, 45, Hampton Place, spokesperson for Nutley High School, advocacy handler. First of all, happy to be here, everybody. I just have to say, I really enjoyed that, that was wonderful. Thank you very, very much for everybody, thank you, thank you, it was wonderful, it was very informative. I just have to just make one suggestion for next time. If you want to think about this, do you have community service for National Honor Society? I think everybody in that high school should do, even if it's 10 hours of community service, because I know in Burkey County, you can't graduate unless you do something.
This will be comments for later.
Oh, that's, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, I'm under, okay, personal actions, yes, under the second page. I just have a question regards to where it says non-athletic. There's a whole group of teachers, I believe, from Washington School, and they are now going to be doing the lunch program. I was just wondering if I can explain that, so...
One of the things that has changed, in order for a teacher, or administrator, or anyone to be paid for work, the work has to be approved ahead of time. So what we've done in the past is that we've asked the principals to highlight and get approval for any teacher who may serve as a lunch duty. And what happened was Mr. Jones, it turns out, I guess it changed the year, the season, the teachers that he had initially approved were not the ones who worked in the lunch program anymore. So one of the things to clarify, everything has a total, you see here, has not changed, that's a total in the lunch program at Washington School, we just needed more teachers to be approved.
Okay, I just, that's just Washington School, I was just curious why other schools weren't listed.
Because the other school, everyone, including Washington School, approved lunch duty in previous agenda. What Mr. Jones was finding was he didn't have enough teachers specifically highlighted who wanted to approve them.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I'll close the session for the programs. Dr. Reeve, will you move Economic Resolution Number One?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move back to the resolution one, ready?
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
This is Dan Chek-Morton.
Yes.
This is Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Kudzinski.
Yes.
Dr. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Rogers.
Mrs. Russo.
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera.
Yes.
Mrs. Spazada.
Yes.
Mr. Pocca.
Yes. Mr. Kudzinski, we move Administrative Resolution Number One.
Yes, Mr. President, I move Administration Resolution Number One, Approval of Professional Development Days, a travel reimbursement, that's a motion.
Second. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
This is Dan Chek-Morton.
Yes.
This is Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Kudzinski.
Yes.
Dr. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Scolera.
Yes.
Mr. Spazada.
Yes.
Mr. Pocca.
Yes. Mr. Spazada, we move Finance Resolutions One through Six.
Yes, Mr. President, I move Finance Resolutions One through Six, out of written.
Second. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
This is Dan Chek-Morton.
Yes.
This is Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Kudzinski.
Yes.
Dr. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Scolera.
Yes.
Mr. Spazada.
Yes.
Mr. Pocca.
Yes. Hearing of the citizens, in this section, we allow questions or comments on all schools related matters. Regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person is limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally-directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board, first person wishing to speak, please step forward. I'll close this portion for you. The old business.
Mr. Kudzinski, since we mentioned the legislation, I don't know if you all knew, just a report that the school district voted to be able to change the member on the vote, passed in Assembly 6211, placed at 7:30, 4:03, so be on the governor's desk tomorrow for signature.
Do you want to maybe elaborate for the public?
Sure. Of course, bill that's been around for a while, but did pass the legislature today, will go to the governor's desk, will allow the school board to move their April Board of Education vote to November. The big change, if you move to November, you don't need budget approval from the citizens. If you stay in April, it still requires budget approval from the citizens. As you're all inside the cap, alongside you all over the cap, either way, they see the cap, you need a separate vote. If you do change to November, you have to remain in that timeframe for four years before you can revert back to April if you didn't like being in November timeframe.
Is that the school board actually moves it, or is it the board commissioners does it?
No, if it's, the commissioners can also move to November, they have to vote for it for November, we do a separate vote here for...
Can they move ours?
No, they can't move ours.
Yeah, because I thought when I was reading it...
No, they can't, that was really, I saw the way you read it, that's not what I meant. They can vote to do theirs, we can vote to do ours, or if somebody did a petition at 15% of the voting population of our last election, that could also change it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other old business? Any new business?
I move for a gentleman, Mr. President.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Aye.
Give me a turn.
Go, go, it was you.